Are we streaming live now?
We are now, yep, we're live right now, sir.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the council's caucus meeting, where we consider items that will be going before the full council tomorrow. Just I want to mention that we will be holding a public meeting on July the 20th at 9:00 a.m. Those items that required a public meeting and you would like to for us to consider them, they will be considered Monday, July 20th at 9:00 a.m. Thank you very much. We have an agenda in front of us. We have Commissioner, or we have no, we have Delano Dell from the Controller's Office, Delano? You're muted? You have to unmute?
Sorry about that. A good afternoon, everyone. We're looking to fill our deputy controller position. That position has been open for a year and the controller is looking to deal with her staff. We've been working shorthanded for the past year, so now we're looking to fill a position that was already approved, was in the budget last year also in the current budget.
Okay, thank you. We have Commissioner Finn from Public Works. Commissioner?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'll briefly go over my items and then open for any questions. There's a couple notification cereals on here. One is for parking around the former, they're the vicinity of the former 74 Franklin Police Headquarters to clean that area up and open up parking that was previously restricted as being police only, so that the general public can use it. There's the permanent change of LaSalle Avenue to One Way in the University District, as well as a change to parking on Connecticut Avenue, both of which were requested by members of those respective districts. A couple other items that I just wanted to highlight. The item 23, permission to enter agreement with Populus, the street manager platform. That is a software program that this company has developed and is offering free trials for that can help us communicate the various uses of our streets. So for example, streets closed for construction, street is going to have lane restrictions for something like the Sidewalk Cafe expansion that we have worked together on. This is a platform that will allow us both internally to communicate amongst departments as well as externally. The data is provided to Google Maps, Waze, and other entities that provide data about the availability of roadways. That's the last item that I wanted to speak specifically on. I'm certainly happy to, or happy to open, answer any questions.
Any questions for the Commissioner?
Thank you, Commissioner. I just have a quick question on item number 10. The first two cereals are in my district. Can you please elaborate? What changes will be happening?
So, right now, South Division Street between Washington and Ellicott, that has a restriction of no parking except police vehicles. That was in place when that area, when the police headquarters was right there. That's right next to 74 Franklin. And we are proposing to change that to a metered parking situation that's consistent with the other metered parking in that vicinity. So I'm just giving one second, I'm opening the item. The proposal is a four-hour-per-day, 10-hour maximum parking rate. That's a parking rate that the Division of Parking uses frequently for areas that don't see a lot of turnover, but people are still interested in parking at. And $4 a day is a lot cheaper than ramps, so we see a lot of success with those. Commissioner Helfer, is anything you want to add?
No, Mike, perfectly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wyatt?
I just had a comment, Mike, it's not on the agenda, but the hatch is not going to be open this year?
Yeah, the vendor told us that given COVID, given their struggles with hiring staff at restaurant industry-wide, they didn't feel that they would be able to open that. So they're going to be making a proposal to me in terms of how to proceed from there, and then we're going to consider what to do with that going forward.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for getting LaSalle taken care of, really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Bowman?
Hey, Commissioner, on the change order for Schiller Park, I saw that it mentioned something about addressing dumping that take place.
You broke up a little bit, Councilmember, but what I understand is there is funding that was designated for this project that wasn't used because the bids came in positively. We had good bids, there's money left over. So our Parks Department put together a design for guide rails and other barriers to be set up so that people couldn't access the area where we're seeing a lot of dumping. We've done that at some other locations and been successful. So hopeful that that will alleviate the situation that you're seeing over there.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Thank you. Councilmember Rashid Wyatt?
I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, I put a resolution forward regarding electronics and pickup for tires. That's been a really, really big problem. And I know that some years ago, we would pick it up normally with our normal trash, and I know that we've changed that. But is there a way that you think that we can do something differently, maybe every other month? Because I know, and again, I want to thank Henry Jackson, there was a huge dump of electronics in my district. It's been a constant problem of electronics and tires being left throughout. And it ends up us having to do it anyway with the impact team or something. And I'm just looking at, is there a way that we can recommend something that we can do routine pickups, maybe not every month, or but just something where people can expect, just like our big trash day, where there's a day that we can get tires and electronic equipment instead of people bringing it to your location, because it doesn't seem that that's happening as regularly as we would like, because again, we constantly have a problem with the dumping.
Yes, I'll take a look at this resolution, Councilmember, speak with Mr. Jackson and Susan Attridge and Paul Sullivan to discuss various options. I can say that we do get a lot of use of the drop-off at 1120 Seneca Street. But obviously, the illegal dumping is still an issue.
Yeah.
And so we'll put our heads together and come up with a plan and continue the conversation with you, because you know, we're certainly, you're absolutely right, we're picking it up anyways. So I think we just have to find ways to be smart about it and probably get into the whole conversation about what do we do to be smarter about illegal dumping and the example of what we're going to be doing at Schiller Park, Schiller, excuse me, Schiller Park, I think is a good one that we can try to follow elsewhere where we inhibit the areas where we're seeing a lot of illegal dumping to hopefully prevent it, because I do think to some extent it's a crime of opportunity. If we got our arms around it, maybe we could help to minimize it. But time will tell and we'll put together a plan and continue the conversation with you.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Commissioner? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Commissioner Helfer, are you here on item?
Yeah, I got three items, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. First item is to request to waive alternate parking on the nine-to-four-only restriction that we have. I think I've talked to most of the council members who have that in their district, and I think everybody is certainly in favor of this. As you know, when COVID hit, we suspended the alternate parking regulation as well as charging for on-meter, charging on-street for the meters. Last Wednesday, we put everything back into effect with the exception of the nine-to-fours. As a courtesy, we did not issue tickets for meter violations on last Wednesday or Thursday, so today is the first day of enforcement of that. However, I'm asking your honorable body for permission to waive that restriction, and I think it makes a lot of sense, and I hope you will consider that. The second item I have is a somewhat complicated item. We threw the Board of Parking, the City of Buffalo contracts with All-Pro Parking for three lots. And these are, these are lots that really are leased to us under a permit program from the State Department of Transportation. They're referred to as the Skyway Loop Lot, the Skyway Lot Number Three and the DOT Lot. During this pandemic, there has been no way for All-Pro Parking to make any revenue whatsoever. And I think we all experienced that as well. I certainly experienced it on ramps and on-street parking. They, however, have stayed current all the way up to July 1st with their rental payments, because they participated in that PPP program. They've reached out to me, I've talked to them. We've gone back and forth, and I think you got a matrix there with three projections of revenue, their milestones, their expenses, and rent that could be paid to the City of Buffalo. It's basically a 12-month projection where we're trying to phase back in the rental payments. Right now, if we didn't do this, I could opt out with the state and we wouldn't have to do this at all, but we would be foregoing the chance to make revenue. What they're asking us to do, and what I agree makes sense, is to do a reduction of it until they can ramp back up to full speed. So you can see there in that matrix I got, gave to you, they would be going the next few months without having to pay rent, because their expenses would way exceed their revenues. And then after we get into the months of October, November, December, January, February, you see that they start making a little bit of money. So we got different lots there, different payment plans in terms of the rental payments, and I'm hoping that you will consider that, and I'll answer any questions you might have on that.
Any questions for the Commissioner? Council President?
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner. I don't have the document in front of me, unfortunately, so some of this may already be in there. Would they be making up at all for the missed months, or is kind of forgiving those months where they didn't have revenue?
Yeah, it would be a forgiveness of those months in anticipation that their revenues start to increase, and then, for instance, you don't have the document in front of you, but I'm looking at, let's say, Skyway Loop Lot. And I think you're familiar with that, that's down across from Pearl Street Pub, what have you. When the rent revenue reaches $17,000, which would be in the, in the month of December, that is finally when it starts to exceed their operator expenses. Then they would start commencing payments to us, and then eventually getting back to the agreement that was put into place years ago where they were paying full rent. What they've agreed to do with me as well is every month I will monitor this, I'll go to their offices, I will look at their revenues, I'll look at their expenses, I'll look at their net income to make sure that the numbers that they're providing us are accurate. But I can, I think we can all assume that it's going to take a while to ramp back up to 100% capacity.
So do they, this is B car?
No, this is not because, this is a completely separate contract. Like I said, under a permit program with the state DOT, the permits come to the City of Buffalo. They allow us to enter into an agreement where the money gets split from the vendor between the City of Buffalo and the DOT.
Okay, so it's another government, I mean, who are we negotiating with?
Well, basically, these are not owned by the City of Buffalo. These are owned by the state.
So do we need state agreement on it at all, Commissioner?
I'm sorry, say that again, Council President?
Do you need the state agreement on this at all?
The state is not foregoing any of their rent. The state is saying that they will not, Elpro sent them a letter, they said, no, we will not forego our rent. So that put me in the option of saying we could just opt out completely and not run these at all. Like I said, right now, this doesn't cost us anything. What we're making right now is a bonus to the City of Buffalo. So if I opt out, which is fine, I mean, the state would probably have to fight another party, not us, to bid these out and do another arrangement with a vendor. To me, it's a little bit of being penny wise and pound foolish. I don't like that they didn't opt out. I don't like that they're not considering participating in this, but I also don't like the fact that if we opt out, we'll never see any of this income again.
Is All-Pro, All-Pro is a private company, right?
Yes, sir.
Do we know?
And these rates are set by, these rates are set by the city. They can't charge anything they want.
But do we know, I mean, we have access to their books through this contract to know whether they, could they really indeed afford to continue to pay?
They have, I don't think the contract allows us access to their books, but in talking to them, I asked them if we could monthly meet together to look, because it's very easy, I could go, you know, I, we will be able to look at these lots every day, drive by these lots, my supervisors will know how many cars are parking in these lots, so that really, they've been a good company to work with, and I don't think they would try to fabricate the numbers at all, but not only that, they will be sharing their net income, their revenue, their expenses, and all their operating expenses as well. You know, their operating expenses are utilities, insurance, the paying display machines, you know, where people do their transactions, that type of thing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Any other questions for Commissioner Helfer?
The only other item I have, Chairman, if it's okay. I always present for the Fire Department when we do the Buffalo Retirement Incentive Program. Is the Chair of the Mayor's Fiscal Sub-Cabinet, that is something that was agreed to in negotiating our last contract, and I think we've talked about it a lot. It's a program that certainly benefits taxpayers of the City of Buffalo, certainly saves the city money, and before your honorable body, right now, I have submitted, along with Commissioner Ronaldo, has submitted seven candidates for the Buffalo Fire Retirement Incentive Program. All the information, the contracts are there. Attached to every one of the contracts are the the numbers in terms of who the person is, when they're retiring, the percentage of retirement, what share is paid for by pension, what shares picked up by the City of Buffalo as part of our Retirement Incentive Program.
Commissioner, are we looking to expand this to the Police Department in other areas where we can incentivize people to retire?
I will, you asked that last time. I was, I'm not on that negotiating team at all. That's Tim Ball and his labor team that are doing that one. I've had off-the-record conversations to share with them exactly how this program has worked. I will make sure that they know in detail what we did, and if they would like to mimic it, they will certainly have that opportunity.
Well, I mean, you explained the savings to the city for each person that leaves that has been there for years and years, collecting a salary, and now they're retiring. The savings to the city per person is approximately how much?
Well, averages, in this particular group of seven that I put in, the least amount that will be paid is approximately $12,000. And now to calculate that savings to the city, currently that person is on injured-on-duty status. They are putting an application into the state for 207A that takes years for determination sometimes, and a lot of times they are denied. So they will sit there on our books while they're injured, collecting tax-free their salary. So what we have done instead is we've made up their difference. If they retire and take a regular pension, we make up the difference between their tax-free dollars and the pension, and then we have a $7,300 supplement, because once they retire, they will have to pay federal taxes. Right now, they're receiving a 100% tax-free check. So to answer your question, I've got, arbitrarily took one firefighter here who will be paying $12,002. That's based on a salary of $75,000. So right there is a $63,000 savings, plus we do not have to contribute to the pension anymore or FICA. So substantial. The least amount, I think, was 44, or I shouldn't say the least, the most we're paying is $44,000, which gives us the least amount of savings. But that still is a significant savings as opposed to paying 100% of their salary. And these are people that Dr. Hughes from Occupational Health has told the Commissioner of Fire, they have no chance of ever coming back as a full-time firefighter, performing the firefighter duties because of the significance of their injuries.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody here from the Police Department? Now, we have a couple items, quite a few items from, from the Police Department. No, nobody here from the Police Department? Any other department? Okay.
Chairman OSP, Brendan's here.
Oh, Brendan, thank you, Brendan. Go right ahead.
Yeah, sure. We have a workshop set up later this week for both Consolidated Plan and the Annual Action Plan, so I won't go into any detail really at this point in time, but these are, one is the annual plan that we submit to the council for the expenditure of both CDBG, Papua, ESG, and home dollars. So we will go over that in detail at the workshop that is set up for later this week. This is separate and apart from some of the CARE Act money that we've received. So this is the standard allocation that we receive year to year. The, there is another component to it this year, which is called the Consolidated Plan, where we work with consultants to put together a consolidated plan to review the needs in our community, so that is why it is a longer document that is filed with you this year. So there is a consolidated plan and annual action plan, and we will go over both later this week in greater detail with all of the project managers that worked on that. Then we have two designated developer agreements that are before the council. One is for 204 High Street. This comes out of a request for proposals that the Mayor's Office of Strategic Planning released. There was some delay because of the pandemic in submitting it to your honorable body that the developer, and we are ready to go forward at this point in time. Again, I underscore, this is just a designated developer agreement at this point in time that the developer selected out of a request for proposal process. Then there is also a DDA extension, a designated developer agreement extension for school building on Olympic. This is the developer that was previously selected by a RFP seeking to extend that to secure the financing that is necessarily, necessarily, they have gone in, I believe, for two rounds at this point in time, and we're thinking hopefully that the third is a charm in terms of that building, that they will need the additional time and the designated developer agreement in place. So those are the three that I was looking to highlight for you.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner, Council President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brendan, you know, as you know, I'm really excited about High Street and the designated developer. Usually we send, I send these over to the committee just so that the developer can tell the community kind of their thoughts and the direction. Do you have anything that is time-sensitive? I want to get it done before the end of July, you know, in the next council meeting? In our last one, is that okay?
Yeah, nope. That's fine, Council President, no objection to that whatsoever.
Okay, so if we can make sure council staff contacts the developer for the committee meeting, and he can just give us, or they can just give us an overview. But I'm not, I don't want to drag this out, because we've been waiting for somebody to develop it, so thank you and your staff for getting this done.
Absolutely.
Any other commissioners? No other commissioners? We'll move on with the agenda. Councilmember Rashid Wyatt?
Majority Leader, are, we're not going to move on these police items, because we need some, we have some questions regarding a number of them, regarding the Pallygraph, regarding the Exxon Enterprise. We have questions on this, and I'm surprised no one from police are on for those.
My understanding is that they weren't invited to the meeting, so it's because they weren't invited, but we'll be more than willing to invite them to the next meeting if you like.
Councilmember, would you, would you like to get a representative on for this meeting now?
Because Malcolm, and maybe I missed something. I didn't see the contract with these. I just saw the memo saying that it was approval for to renew contract. Did I miss something?
No, many of them are renewals, and so it's difficult to not resubmit the entire text of the original contract as opposed to just any updated terms on the renewal. But we can reach out and get a representative to try to, maybe if we take this out of order, we can get them in at the end.
Okay, yeah, because it didn't have a dollar, I didn't see a dollar amount or anything, it's just we're renewing it blindly, and of course, we don't know, I don't remember those numbers, but we should know what the numbers are, or they should bring it back to us, so yeah, if we could have them, I would appreciate it.
Okay, we'll bring up, we can hold them in advance, and we can bring up each specific item, because there might be some that have a dollar amount and that you're fine with.
Okay.
Council President?
Can I make a suggestion? If we don't have the information, send it to committee. Because even if they come on, we're not going to have time to go through all of these contracts in this caucus. And I think that this came up on the last meeting, and maybe it's not clear yet across to the commissioners that, that at this point, especially with finances being what they are, I think, I think if I roll back the tape, we said all contracts should come with the full contract. Even, so if there's a misunderstanding there, even if it's a renewal, because these may be things that we look at now and say, we might not need to continue that contract at this time. So I'm not interested in holding this in abeyance, and then them come on to say we'll provide the information. If we just send it to committee, those items that are in question, and then we have time to review the items, is my suggestion, if that's okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
It seems like everybody's in agreement. Okay, thank you very much. We'll go start the agenda. Number one to CD. Number two, Ellicott Developer Agreement. Council President?
That's going to go to committee?
Committee?
Yes.
Number three, Fillmore District?
Approved, please.
Approved? Number four, Maston?
Majority Leader, whoever doing, I don't know if it's Jim or Montor, number two is CD.
CD?
Yeah.
Okay. Number three was approved, four is in Maston?
Yeah, we can approve items four, five, and six for Maston.
Approve items four, five, and six. Number seven is an approve. Number eight, report of sale, various lots on bus day.
That's an approve, that's fine.
Number nine to civil service. 10 is receive and file. 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, and 23 are approved. Okay, these are the police items. We're going to send them all to committee. All the, that'd be 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32. 32?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The contract between the City of Buffalo and Endeavor Health Services, I believe they're going to submit some amendments.
Okay.
The contract actually started on June 1st. The contract was for June 1st, and it stipulates that the mental health workers will begin working in mid-July. But there's some necessary language that needs to be updated. I'm not sure if they needed this approved for tomorrow, but if they can get that language in there and send someone to council tomorrow to explain the changes, then I would really like to make sure that we have our licensed clinical social workers and licensed mental health counselors in place as soon as possible to work in conjunction and alongside the Police Department.
Okay, should we send that one without recommendation?
I would, I would like if my colleagues agree if we could send that without rec, and if tomorrow we are not satisfied, we can send item 32 to committee with the other items.
Okay. Number 33, receive and file?
Councilmember, just to clarify, 24 through 31, what committee did you want to send those to?
Those can go to Finance, because they're all dealing with financials.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah. 33 was a receive and file, 34 approved, 35 approved, 36 isn't approved. 37, 38 are receive and file. 39 and 40 approved. 41, civil service. 42 in University, Minnesota Black Club Letter to Wyatt. What would you like to do with that?
CD.
CD, okay. 44 to Ledge. 45 to CD.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go right ahead.
45, McLaughlin, I'm not sure where this item needs to go, but I would prefer it go to Ledge as there are proposed policies in it, number one. Number two, this Number two, this report is from two thousand and thirteen, of which, of course, I would like to have the most up-to-date data provided for the common council to consider. So I'm also going to late file Open Buffalo's latest criminal justice report that they have, which I sent to my chief of staff, who in turn, I believe, sent that to the common council's chief of staff, Malcolm. And if Mr. Eartha could ensure that these items are filed closely together so that they can both be taken into consideration together.
Okay.
And now if it needs to go to CD, that's great, but these items I would like to go to Ledge and the Police Oversight Committee, Mr. Chair, so that we have some data to consider in our dialogues and discussions.
Okay, so to Ledge and the Oversight Committee? Forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, and forty-nine are receive and file. Fifty to CD. Fifty-one, University District supplemental information.
This can go, this is going to go to see legislation, I believe, legislation. Because they're here, there, there's going to be a hearing in July, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Like, yes. So that'll go to Ledge. Fifty-two is an allocate letter regarding CDBG funds and emergency solutions. Council President?
It can be received, you can send it over to finance since it's talking about finances.
All right, finance. Fifty-three to CD, submission, civil services marked. Okay. Let's see, community development, Heritage Point. Odd black partial.
It's still going without rec.
Without rec? Is item thirty-one going without rec as well, or?
Everything that's without rec will still go without rec.
All right.
I'll let you go in the morning.
Can you go back to thirty-two? I missed thirty. Thirty-two to Ledge. Thirty-three, receive and file. Thirty-four, thirty, thirty-five are receive and file. Legislation. Item thirty-eight was recommitted. Resolutions. Let's see, fifty-four is approved, fifty-five approved. Fifty-six, Commission Citizens Rights Community Annual Report. Council President?
A council president, you're on mute.
Thank you. It could just go to legend to. Yeah, so I would like it approved and then send the remainder to Ledge.
Motion to approve, remainder to legislation.
Thank you, sir.
Thirty-seven, allocate public database for police stop reports.
Can, can I go back? I think, let me, Clark, would this be in, that last one be an adopt because it's kind of asking for information instead of approve?
You're correct, Council President. It's an adopt.
It's, it should be a, okay.
Okay. Fifty-seven.
The same thing, adopts, send the resolves, and remainder to police oversight and ledge?
Adopt, remainder to police oversight and legislation. Fifty-eight.
Same thing.
Adopt, remainder to legislation, police oversight?
Yes.
Okay. Fifty-nine is adopt.
Yeah, adopt or receive and file because I don't know if it needs to be adopted. Because it, it is the president that appoints, so it's kind of information.
Would you like to?
I don't mind adopting it, but but it can be received and filed.
Which one?
The appointments to the police task.
I mean, would, would you like it adopted or received and filed?
We can, we can adopt it.
Okay, adopt. Sixty is an adopt, sixty-one, university, and allocate.
And the remainder to Ledge and police oversight.
Adopt, remainder to Ledge and police oversight. Sixty-two. University?
Same thing.
Okay, adopt, remainder, ledge, and police oversight. Sixty-three, university, special run to pick electronics and tires.
I think that would be adopt and go to community development.
Okay. Adopt, remainder to P.
Yes.
Okay, we're all set then. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, I have a question on item sixty-one.
Sixty-one?
Yeah.
Go back to sixty-one? Sixty-one was special run to pick up electronics and tires?
No, on the availability of labor contracts with the city of Buffalo.
Oh, okay, go right ahead. Go right ahead, Joe.
Yeah, the question is for the law department. My understanding in the past has been that basically the mayor, the administration and the unions would negotiate and the council would not be privy to anything that would be going on until after the, the contract was made public. Does this impact that in any way?
Assistant Corporation Council Karen Gordon. You're correct, as it relates to negotiations with the labor union, it's normally something that is done between them. They come up with a terms and agreement and then if necessary, it's sent to the common council. I can't say whether or not, like specifically, if I, if it's going to impact, I, I think I would need to delve into it a little bit closer or probably speak to Tim on a matter to see where they are. But I think since it's not asking for, I don't think it's asking for us to delve into, into metal in the negotiation process. So I think it should be fine. Unless, you know, we're anticipating that that's what we're going to do, but from looking at the resolution, I don't think that's the intent or the activities of the common council. So I think it still is going to be left in the hands of law to do the negotiations and then send a final determinations to the body.
Yeah, so Karen's question then is, is that the first resolve calls on the administration to file in entirety any labor contracts that need to be approved by this honorable body. We already do that, don't we?
I believe the, the final contracts, yes, are normally sent to the common council. But by then, it's normally kind of negotiated already. So whatever we get is what the parties have sit down and have agreed to. And then we get it, of course, the common council can and has the authority to then decide whether or not they want to approve it in its entirety or they want to ask for for changes or for, you know, for the negotiations between the department and, and the city, or the city and the, the union. But outside of that, it's nothing uncommon. We normally get it. I'm not sure how often that is because most of our labor union contracts are longstanding contracts for many, many years. So sometimes they're never actually renewed in its entirety, but we have MOUs, a memorandum of understanding that further the actions and expectations of the union without actually coming to the table and doing an entire new contract.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Council President?
Just for clarity, and I, I thank my colleague for answering, asking those questions because I think it does need to be clear. This is not, the resolution has absolutely nothing to do with negotiations. That remains intact. The resolution doesn't even call for that. However, we have received the council union requests to ratify a union contract with a summary and not with the detailed information. And so that's basically what this is calling for is that when it is filed, that the entire contract should be filed so that before we make a decision, we know what was negotiated. And, and that's just about the transparency. So that, just like we just went through about contracts renewal, for instance, and so we get kind of a summary of what that is, but I think that we are in a season in which detail is very, very important for our decision-making body. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Councilmember Winkle?
The, the, the journal on the, online is, is not updated, so I, I don't know what item is correlated or corresponding, I'm sorry, corresponding to what we're discussing. I'm trying to find it. He said item sixty-one is not item sixty-one online. So which item are we actually referring to? What is it? What is it? What is the agenda item number?
Oh, Councilmember Winkle, the item that's before them is twenty-eight sixty-one.
Now, again, the, the labor contract, you know, let me see here. Are we, are we, what you, what you, again, are we talking about? Is this, is this all labor contracts or is this a specific labor contract that we're referring to, or is it any labor contract? This is a broad.
We're just speaking to the police.
Huh?
Just the police.
No, I think it's written for all contracts, Councilmember Wyatt. The intent was for all contracts, that we receive all contracts in its fullest and that they be made public because that has been the request of transparency groups who have said, make it public.
You're exactly right. I apologize. You're right. All contracts.
Okay, so that, that, that's, that's clear because even though it does, that's, that's clear because I know it says any labor contract that needs to be approved. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Council President? Nope, that's it. No further questions, no comments. We're done. Thank you. See you tomorrow.